For all those who care to join me, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so Betty, Ryan, Courtney, and Heather, and Bill and Charlene.
Oh, we have seven, okay.
I know, I didn't say.
Do we have quorum?
So I'd like to share the board norms. Debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. Assume best intentions in all discussions. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to pass the consent agenda? Is that the same?
No, you got it.
Yeah, okay.
You got it.
Thank you.
You've got it. You're going right along.
All right. Motion for consent.
Pass.
Second.
Consent agenda.
All in, any discussion about the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. Do we have anyone from the public?
I didn't look at the thing, but I don't think so.
Betty, no. No, okay. Kevin is here.
I know, Kevin's here.
Hi, Kevin. Any public input?
Do you have any input?
No?
Okay.
And we have our student reps' reports.
Okay. My favorite part.
RIS is off to a busy start. Our chocolate bar fundraiser is in full swing and wraps up on October 9th. A newly formed after-school beauty robotics club has begun its fulfillment. Students in grades five and six have been writing and presenting their speeches for student council elections. We also have started up Sundays for Success again, which celebrates students consistently following our school-wide expectations. Parent-teacher conferences are scheduled this week for Thursday afternoon and evening and Friday morning. September at Northeast was full of fun and moving. We held our first Paws Character Trait Assembly with special guest speaker Ms. McKean, and spent the month discussing and modeling how to treat others respectfully. Our second graders made excellent expected and unexpected behavior videos in our morning announcements for kindergarteners in first grade. Special thanks to our families for joining us for community circles during our open house. We loved having students model for families how we start every day at school. We look forward to meeting with families during parent-teacher conferences later this week. Don't forget to check out the Galactic Book Fair. At Northwest, we recently held our first student-led assembly of the school year. The theme of the Star Student Assembly was respect, and the students did an outstanding job performing skits that illustrated what respect looks like. Their acting was truly impressive, and we were delighted to have several families join us for the event. This week marks our first family engagement evening of the year with a focus on literacy. It will showcase ways to support children's literacy development at home, and all families will have the opportunity to take home helpful resources. Later in the year, we'll host two additional evenings focusing on mathematics and science. We'll be holding conferences this week on Thursday afternoon and Friday morning. If you have a child at Northwest and haven't signed up yet, please call. Call and schedule your time.
At Stafford Technical Center, as part of our professional development this year, this school year, we have Cheryl McDonough from Collins Writing in our school a couple of days a month, where she spends her time coaching both teachers and administrators. This has been a great way to develop cross-curricular assignments that are blending technical and academic skills through writing in all of our programs. Stafford will once again be part of the Howling Parade. The theme this year will be Happy Birthday Stafford, and students and staff will dress for the careers in which their program is preparing them for. Stafford recently held our Fall Program Advisor Committee Breakfast, and the many businesses that support our programs do their involvement in steering our curriculum, equipment purchases, and providing feedback on student work. We had representation from over 70 local businesses and had a presenter from ACT regarding the Work Ready Communities Initiative that we are hoping to kickstart in Rutland County this year. Rutland Middle School says, "Our faculty is finishing up our Universal Design for Learning class through Harvard. We are looking forward to implementing our new learning in our classrooms." And also, "Our students have taken the first of three school climate surveys. While we still have work to do, we are very proud of our results." Those results are: 80% of our students feel successful at school. 80% of our students believe that RMS has high standards for achievement. 87% of our students believe that RMS has clear rules and expectation. 77% of our students feel safe at RMS. And 79% of our students feel proud in being a Rutland middle schooler. And for Rutland High School, RHS held our annual Homecoming Week. Each day of the week had a different theme, including Twin Day, Sports Jersey Day, and our Friday Class Color Day. Homecoming weekend included a series of home games, including field hockey, soccer, and football. In addition, the juniors and seniors squared off in a girls' flag football game on Saturday, and the week was capped off with dance on Saturday night. Thank you to A.D. Mike Norman, the Athletics Department, Student Government, and the Activities and Athletics Committee, including Kathy Solza and Mary Beth Lennox Levens for organizing the week. Congratulations to Phineon Smathers, who was named a National Merit Semi-finalist based on his performance in the PSAT. He now has the opportunity to continue in the competition for 6,870 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly $26 million. Congratulations, Phin. Later this month, Rutland High School will host the Vermont Supreme Court for a day of cases and arguments. On October 24th, the theater will be converted into a courtroom for the day, and both court classes, court and classes, will be in session. Justices will have lunch with students in the dollhouse, and classes will be able to sign up to watch the proceedings with their teachers. Finally, we are very proud to report that the RHS football team completed a spring fundraiser. Well, part of the money will go to purchasing Salute to Service jerseys, which the team will wear in their October 18th Salute to Service home game. They also raised $14,000, which is split between Rutland United Way, Rutland Recreation Department, and the Board of the First Club.
Thank you. That's impressive.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Do any commissioners have any questions for our student reps? Well, thank you both. We have a...
Director's report.
Director of Visiting Student Department.
Bill said, "Do you want anything on the agenda? I'd like the opportunity to speak." Certainly.
Looking like an educator.
I'd like to take the opportunity to just plug our latest episode of the Rutland City Public Schools Learning Lounge. Kristy Kaludi, who is our thoughtful host, pulled together a group of folks to talk about our work with Portrait of a Graduate and the strategic plan. So the easiest way to find it is to go to YouTube and type in RCPS Learning Lounge, and it's the first thing that comes up. And then on Friday, while the folks are doing, while the teachers are doing parent-teacher conferences, we have our parent educators having a day-long professional learning. We have four-day-long workshops that have been planned based on the input that they gave last spring on different topics they would like to learn more about. We have applied behavior analysis, and that's going to be led by our own board-certified behavior analyst, Ryan Lobella. We also have supporting children with autism spectrum disorders, and that's going to be presented by the New England Children's Center. We have developing self-esteem with coping skills with our own Megan Martin. And we have understanding childhood trauma, and a Rutland middle school team is going to lead that. We have Lisa Borner, Kim Adams, Erica Kaludi, Megan Marsh, and Abby Bennett.
It's a good team.
Thank you. That sounds great. So we have a Tapestry and Epic update from Maria Gilman.
Hello.
Try control alt delete.
For escape.
Always for escape.
Burning on and off again.
Task manager.
Task manager.
Task manager, yeah.
Oh, the mouse is off. Step one. Functioning mouse.
X that out. Am I X that out?
Nope, put in the corner. Yep.
Thanks, Betty.
Teamwork.
Ryan's in a band. He could sing.
Okay, ready for that?
Need to warm up.
Okay, so, welcome. Thank you for having me. And I wanted to quickly go over kind of what, very high level, what has happened since I've been here, because I'm now in my fifth year here. I came in 2020. Fifty times ahead by all, when all anybody was trying to do was stabilize what was going on around us. Good catch. The next year, 21, 22, we worked on what is our vision and re-establishing some expectations of where we wanted to go. And we've continued to grow, expand, and hands-build on that since then. This past summer, I'll give you some details on that in a minute, but if you haven't heard, it was quite a fabulous experience all the way there. Kids, staff, families, the community, folks that we worked with really had a good time, despite the hot, hot weather. So none of this can happen without all of your support and belief in us, and of course, everybody in the school system, administrators, and everybody else spreading the word and sending kids our way. We have worked really hard to make sure that we are recruiting people that really want to be doing this work, because you can't do it if you don't really want to. It's really hard. Some days, it's really easy, but those are sometimes the exceptions rather than the rule. We've also been trying to really make sure that our team feels supported and has access to and takes advantage of training that we provide, professional development. I think I told you at the end of last year, we had worked with Jenna Whitehorn to have trauma-informed practices brought to both Tapestry and Epic, and we had a number of people participate in that, and we'll continue that type of work as well, because that's really key. We have, you've heard from me before, dedicated and invested staff, especially now. Just for an example, one data point, from this past summer to today, 44 of 45 staff came with us.
That's great.
Our staff survey, one of our grant goals or grant measures for Tapestry was our satisfaction of staff. It was 100%. It's actually a little terrifying, because you know where you're going. So we'll see. But they really do appreciate the time, the energy, and the offerings. We have even at the state level shared, because it's a big push coming out of, really coming out of COVID, and really trying to attract people to the field and retain them and obtain them. What are you doing to recognize folks? And this isn't platitudes, at least not for us. So beyond having done and will continue to do for a while, recognition bonuses. We have a number of staff that have started showing an interest and developing some professional development and putting that forward. We have also had a couple of people get together and plan and execute a wonderful evening with our families that are moving in that don't speak English to help with filling out forms and understanding what the programs are and things like that. And we'll be doing more of those kinds of things globally, but also very intentionally targeted as we go forward. In the summer, we served 400 kids, actually 450 if you include the tutoring kids. I'm not including them because they're a subset, didn't necessarily participate in everything that we were offering. The cost of the summer was $383,000 and change for both programs combined. That averages to roughly $1,000 per kid. I don't think that's too bad, but I'm going to reinforce that by saying our rack rate for Tapestry was $185 for the week. Getting $1,000 worth of stuff is pretty...
Yeah.
...adipitous. And we have a number of folks that are in tapestry on childcare benefits, so they're not paying anything at all out of their own pocket, which is even better. You know, so the types of things that they experienced, had access to, besides goats, sorry, they were so cute.
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
They went everywhere. They did everything, and they went back to the lakes, and they went to the fun spot, and they went to the pinball museum down in Manchester, which looks really cool by the way.
Pinball?
Yeah. I've heard amazing things, and now I've seen where it is. So yes, we had an amazing summer, underscored by, I don't know if everybody saw the letter to the editor that Chris Van Skiver did. He's a teacher at the middle school and worked for us in Tapestry at RIS in the summer, because he really wanted to start building those relationships and connections with the kids before they even got to him. He shared what the school district and Tapestry do for all kids. So when you have a moment, if you haven't read that, please do. Also shared recently at the state level, I'm locked up for sure. I don't have one necessarily for everybody, just take a quick look. And I also have packets as samples of, you know, the kinds of things that are going out to families to inform them of what's happening in the programs. Newsletters and calendars introducing STEM, talking about all the wonderful enrichments and activities that are happening. Another thing that happened this summer, and I'm not stuck in summer, I promise, I'm very much in October right now. The state comes to our licensed childcare programs and visits to make sure that we are compliant and doing everything that we're supposed to be doing. They visited RIS in July. Our licenser approached me during her visit and said, "I want to take some of this information back to the state level, because I want your model to be replicated." Having different programming happening that the kids rotate through, so everybody gets to experience everything on-site and then when they go out. So that was really a great moment for us, because that's something that Phil Bonzingeri in my office really brought and introduced, and has cultivated, and it's working. So we're very happy, we were very happy with that recognition in the moment, but it will carry forward. So we have a high level of engagement, and you can see it if you come into the programs in the afternoon. Can't come in the summer, the summer's over. But, you know, the kids are with us a very long day in the summer, they're with us at the end, and extending a long day in the school year. But for the most part, even the kids will say, "I don't want to be here." Once you get them back engaged in what's going on, then they don't want to leave at the end of the day. So it's really wonderful to see some of the achievements, and I shared earlier, the good things that we set our sites on up to four or five years ago. Online registration, it happened. Carolyn Thaddeus, key player in making that happen. Not without unintended consequences, but we're working all that through, and she's been a rock star. We have added our second full-time site coordinator at Rutland and Ollie at school. Didn't expect to do that until next year. The opportunity arose, the candidate arose, we really needed it, and that's been a wonderful addition that we made going into the school year. I already mentioned the PD. We have at Northeast School, two of the STEM team teachers have prepared an enrichment program that they're going to kick off in January with our kids for six weeks. They're going to work with all of the kids in the program over there, not just like 10 of them at a time. So that should be really fun, and they'll introduce them to all kinds of science concepts and reading, everything they have kind of mashed into that, the pretty neat program they put together. Some data points just to share with you, and I already shared one. Students that we serve this summer, and in addition to this, I wish I had the number of refugee and immigrant kids, I think it was about 20. We had 56 rising third graders. That was 44% of our overall population at RIS this summer. That's a huge number. And it was, the parents were really excited that the kids will be introduced to the school in advance of coming in in the fall. It was a little rocky to start, but boy, it moved out pretty quickly with the kids. In Epic, you may recall, we blended programs this summer, because we haven't been offering anything at the high school, but we didn't want to only focus on middle school age. And we had kids from seventh through 11th grade participate, and we served 99 kids this summer. And we moved each way in the two campuses, so it worked. And then we did our enrichment week in collaboration with the Mint. We held a small camp down there. Honestly, I was hoping for 30 kids. We had 15, but it went remarkably well. Not sure what we'll do going forward, but it was an interesting experiment to try taking something, bringing it somewhere, and having that kind of focus. We were inside, we were outside, we were healthy. It was from eight to four every day, just very robust, and the kids were really excited to be there. So I just wanted to share that. I won't go through all kinds of data. We're in data moment at this time. We have all kinds of data due November 1st, but some quick highlights. From our, the first couple are just Tapestry, from our 21C grant. We have certain goals that we set. These two in particular, serving 50% of the K to 4 population. We expected to serve 138 this year. We served 163. So we're already ahead, which is good, but we want to keep that momentum, because we want to exceed the goal and not just meet it. And the driver behind that is really making sure, you may recall, that we have enticing programming. So we're really upping our game yet again. Looking at improving school day engagement for youth that are with us 180 hours a year. That's an important number, because as you start to see things really be impacted back into the school day. We established our baseline that last year, that was 15%, so this year we'll see where that goes in the spring. In terms of the other, looking at both programs and some of the state-level goals, now, we have probably, we have five primary goals with some sub-objectives. The state has more like 20, and some sub-objectives. Yeah, you're so surprised you hear that. But, you know, we are at or exceeding on most every benchmark that they have. The one thing that they are pressing us to do that we already started to work on is having a more formal program for kids coming out of, I would say, even out of sixth grade and up, not just at a working age, to really help cultivate them for work, for contributing to society, for entrepreneurship, whatever they happen to want to do, but give them those skills, support, and experiences. So we're going to be working on that this year, next summer, and beyond. We do it now, but not quite as formally as we'd like. So those are some of the highlights there. In terms of our financial stability, I mentioned summer, but our overall budget for Tapestry is $1.4 million this year. Our expenses to date are a little higher than that I did that four weeks ago. But, you know, a lion's share of that number that you see there was summer. And school year costs about the same for nine months, but it's lesser part of the day. Epic, we go in in January for our next five-year grant. I don't know if we'll get more money. We have to plan that and work on that. That's going to be a really big push in the next three months. You'll hear more about that, I'm sure, and some bits and pieces along the way. But, you know, we are mostly self-sustaining. We have overhead and lights and buses and things like that that you all provide, but we bring in our own revenue to support our programs. So what are we looking at going forward, because we've accomplished a lot of things? Leadership launchpad, I did mention that in the spring. We don't have to launch it this summer, but we had some pickups, let's say. School break programs, lots of staff thinking about wanting to offer some programming over some of the breaks. So we'll start working on that this year and introducing that in small doses to pilot tests, see what works, make sure that it's, you know, working for kids, families, and us, and the schools. Kindergarteners, Pam and I and others got together and submitted a grant to the Baus Trust, because we want to start serving like we do third graders and to RIS, kindergarteners coming in. I will say yet again, reaching out to the state, because by law, we're not allowed to serve kindergartners. They really like what we're talking about, and they want to work with us. So that is good to hear. We have a lot of high school kids working for us now, and a lot of them are athletes, musicians. They want to share their passions. So we want to develop some programming around that, and Northwest is really looking at trying to pilot that soon, because they have kids that are interested. I already mentioned the Epic grant.
This is such an awesome program, and it helps so many families in so many different ways. And I'm just thinking, for those people who might be watching at home, thinking, "This is amazing. I wish my kid could be in this." Are you still taking on new students for this school year?
Yes, always. We have always open enrollment. We do have waitlists right now at Northwest, very minor, and we've been rolling kids in very rapidly. RIS, we have a more substantial waitlist, but we're very, very close to opening up another group, which will sweep all of those kids in. So what we say to people is, "Please register," so that you can be on the list, and we can call you when you can come in, which could be, sometimes it's a day, sometimes it's a couple of weeks.
Smart.
But you can't hear from us if you not do the...
Sense. Thank you.
I just want to say it is amazing what you have done. Like, it is amazing. And I want to thank you. It's so important to our community, to the families, so kudos.
No, it's been great. It's a lot of fun. I really don't have any problem getting up in the morning and coming into work. And there's always plenty to do.
Isn't there?
If anything, let me know.
Isn't there?
This month is National Lights on After School Month, so we'll be having events, and I'll make sure we publicize that on our part of the website.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Don't they say something like replication is the best form of flattery or something? There's some cliche. What is it? It's something. I can't get it. It's something. So the state wanting to model, I mean, that's everything. That's huge, so, yeah.
Well, it's funny.
I'll get the cliche in my head eventually.
Bill and I presented at the Vermont After School Conference last year, and they invited us back for two sessions this year.
Nice.
And then two of the six that were sold out weeks...
Awesome. I love it. Great. Nice. Yes, good.
Thanks, Mary.
Good stuff.
Okay, Ted, we have a budget planning overview.
About Marie and this program, because it's such an incredible jewel and asset for this community to have that kind of robust program during summers and after school. Building it up from where Marie started five years ago, that's really heavy lifting, as you were acknowledging. And a lot of this, if not all of it, is funded with federal grants, so it's truly a boon to the community. I love working with Marie and everybody else, so. Let's talk a little bit about the overall budget. My goal tonight is to provide you with a general scene set, to kind of give you an idea of what to expect in terms of the coming annual budget. A month from now, when we get back together in early November, we'll have a far more detailed outlook and budget to present to you. During the month of October, all of the administration or... During the month of October, all of the administration are working with the business office to develop detailed plans and the cost implications. So we're in the process of working with our colleagues, pulling that information together, and we'll have a consolidated view of that for you a month from now. But I'll, I want to give you a preliminary idea of perhaps what to expect at that time and to indicate to you that as of this point in time, based on what we're seeing, we're cautiously optimistic. And by that, I mean we're cautiously optimistic that in 2026, we're going to be able to continue to maintain the level and the quality of service. We call this our level service scenario as a starting point, at a reasonable cost, which of course, especially in this environment, is critical. One of the reasons for that is the focus that the board has supported and the administration has provided really for many years, year by year, to ensure that we put into place and maintained what we refer to as a sustainable cost structure, managing not just for the current year, but for future years. And I think that as we go further into the budget cycle for '26, we're going to see a number of the benefits from having been doing that, and of course, we'll continue. So the next couple of charts that I'm going to get into, the first few charts show you a few metrics on staffing and inflation, which I think are relevant for the scene set. Then I'll review a couple of charts that recap some of the key assumptions in major areas. And during that time, if you have questions or suggestions, please let me know, or of course, anytime afterward, because now is the time to be providing some of that key input. And then I'll finish up by giving you a brief update on the status of the brand-new commission that was formed to look into and recommend a vision for the future of education in Vermont, set up by the yield bill this year, Act 183. So I'll give you a little bit of an update on that. So let me move over to the slideshow, and we'll go from here. Okay. So I'm starting with a chart of our full-time employees going, you've seen this chart before, going back to the budget for fiscal '21, when we had five hundred and twenty-two full-time employees. As you'll recall, I'm sure, we were reducing that gradually over several years, utilizing mainly natural attrition, retirements and resignations. We reached a point for the fiscal '24 budget, slightly below five hundred employees full-time, where we said, we think this is sustainable for the current year, and for this current budget year of fiscal '25, we were able to maintain this level service at a cost that was reasonable as measured by the voter approval we received last March, albeit approval by a more narrow voting margin than we have experienced in the past. So going into the budget for fiscal '26, our initial budget planning basis will be to once again assume a fairly level staffing at about four hundred and ninety-five FTEs. We'll see where that brings us, and if we can, with managing other aspects of the costs, manage to keep ourselves at that level, you know, we'll certainly do so. You'll have an opportunity to look at that more closely in early November, and then to the extent that any adjustments might need to be made, we'll have ample opportunity to talk about it at that time. Any questions about the staffing levels? Okay. So let's talk a little bit about inflation. And these next two charts are going to show you two different metrics of inflation, but the important point that I want to leave with you is the patterns are the same. So after inflation by any number of metrics, and you've heard me say before, they're literally, it's, I'm not exaggerating when I tell you, there are dozens and dozens of metrics for inflation. They're measured differently, they are calibrated differently, so it kind of depends on what you're looking for and what you want to measure. But two of the more prominent ones are, of course, the CPI. And there's two versions of that you can see in the light blue and the darker blue curves. One, which is referred to as the all items, and another, the lighter blue dots exclude food and energy, not because we don't have to buy them, but because those have been historically a little more volatile. So sometimes economists like to look at the metrics without that. And so as you can see from the arrow toward the bottom axis there, in twenty, in calendar 2023, the CPI actually dropped down to three percent for the first time in a number of years, and has now dropped below three percent, registering two point five percent for August. We're going to get another read of CPI on Thursday, so, you know, we'll get to see if this trend continues. We're cautiously optimistic that it will, because if that happens, that will make our planning and our budgeting obviously a little bit easier in quite a number of categories. The next chart looks very similar. This is a different index called the Personal Consumption Expenditures Index Measure of Inflation. And this one shows you a one-year annual change also through August of this year of slightly less, two point two percent. And this one, as you can also see from the chart, has been running below three percent since, since late 2023. The reason why I show you this is when you hear about the Federal Reserve deciding upon interest rate policy, this is one of the Federal Reserve's preferred metrics for inflation. It's done differently than CPI, for example. CPI won't measure the effects of if prices go up, sometimes consumers will switch to different brands like generics, or switch to different stores, or perhaps go from a medium-octane gasoline to a low-octane gasoline to moderate the outflow of dollars with higher prices. So that's an offset to inflation when you use the PCE. Also, PCE does not weight rental costs as heavily as the CPI. And that's really important because the CPI is, about one-third of it is driven by rental costs. And so how you measure that's important. Those have been high and trending down, and that's one reason why CPI currently is running a little above PCE. So, you know, you just have to know what you're dealing with, but to me, these different measures are showing a very similar trend, which I think is encouraging, and we're hoping that as we get into budgeting the non-salary and benefits aspects of our budget, and that's about twenty percent of the budget, so it's material, we're hopefully going to be benefiting from lower rates of inflation continuing. That said, I don't want to paint too rosy a picture because what this chart shows you is the index, the consumer price index over time. So, you know, if you were to go back to, say, the COVID time, 2020, you can see that the index, the cost index, was significantly lower. This is benchmark for 1982 and 1984 to be equal to an index of one hundred. So of course, you can see the curve was accelerating as inflation was really picking up before peaking at nine percent in July of 2022. And then as inflation started to lower or slow down in its rate, the curve didn't go up quite as fast. But the key is, it's still going up. And as of August, that metric is three hundred and fourteen, you know, relative to under three hundred only a few years ago. And that three fourteen more accurately represents the level of costs that we'll be budgeting for. Good news is, hopefully, it won't be too much higher than what we had to incorporate in this year's budget. Any questions about inflation and staffing, or any comments? Okay, great. So let's look at a few of our selected assumptions. We all know salaries and benefits are the biggest cost component for the school's budget at about eighty percent. Many of you probably will recall that we now have labor, we're very happy we have excellent labor contracts in place with our education support professionals and our ASME-represented employees through 2027, so we know what those salary increases are going to be. And our regional administrators, we have typically been renewing that contract on an annual basis, but we've got that contract through '25, and we don't anticipate any significant difficulties when '26 renewal comes along. The teacher contract negotiations are still ongoing. They are moving into mediation. You know, hopefully, we'll be able also, as we have with the other three unions, to reach a mutually beneficial and amicable agreement that is reasonable in terms of the district's cost structure. Medical costs, we've all talked about and familiar with medical costs. We are going to have an update from our VHI provider sometime this month. So when I come back to you in November, I'll be able to tell you what VHI is indicating as its preliminary filing for the rate increase for the coming year. While that's not their final number, it's typically very close. They do continue to have conversations with the appropriate, you know, labor contacts in terms of the structure of the medical plan and the structures implications for costs. This is a very complex topic, and basically, to simplify it, we've got a very generous set of medical plans which have structurally high costs. And probably the only way to go about making a fundamental change in the cost curve, which has been increases of double digits for, I think, four of the last five years, will be ultimately to step back and take a look at the structure of those, of those programs. But of course, that will require, that would require coordination and agreement from various labor unions, and will have no impact whatsoever on our budgeting for '26. Yes, Karen?
Could you just explain a little bit? The health insurance now is controlled by the state, or no?
So it is, let's, I would, I would say the health insurance program for our teachers and our employees is set at the state level, and it is set by panels of both health insurance people from VHI, other representatives from, like, business, business officials, and then labor representatives, such as from the Teachers Association. I think, I think it's called the Commission on Public School Employee Health Benefits. But yes, it's decided at the state level, and basically, school systems, once the agreement is made at the state level, school systems are told, here are the plans, and here are the costs. I hope that answers.
So you just live with whatever they decide?
That, we have no, yeah, we have no choice but to do that. What we do is we offer, well, and you say we just live with it, but I do want to emphasize there are options within those. So for example, there are four different kinds of plans that we offer. And as you might imagine, they have different costs and they have different coverages. So one thing any employee can do is they can decide, well, do I really need all of that medical care? If I've been healthy, maybe I can get by with a less expensive plan. There are different tiers, we call them, you know? Am I single? Am I married with no children? Am I a single parent with children? So there are multiple tiers that people fit into that, so it changes a little bit with the demographics. And then we literally go in when we're putting together the district budget in November and December, and we price it literally employee by employee based upon what people elect during the open enrollment period. So employees can choose, that gives you some cost flexibility. Typically, people don't downgrade to save money because they don't want to give up the medical benefits, but there is at least a little pricing flexibility in there. And we do see a mix effect occasionally if people do shift down. But no fundamental.
It just seems like the cost is going up, 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 and, you know, I don't think it's fair, I mean, I, as, if I were an employee, I'm not going to opt to take a less, less coverage.
And we don't recommend that.
Exactly.
We don't recommend that.
Because you don't know what's going to happen.
I'm just telling you what we have observed in recent years, because since the employees pick up twenty percent of the cost themselves, you know, that impacts their budget. You know, you do see some plan switching occasionally, or, you know, somebody whose adult child was twenty-six and now becomes twenty-seven moves off of the plan, and so, you know, they have a different, they have a different level of coverage. But yeah, the, the only thing I can say to you that I find a possible kind of ray of hope a little bit is when VHI announced their average price increase of sixteen point four percent for the current year, and each plan went up by different percentages, but the average is sixteen four. Of that, three point two percent was not so much for the coming year's costs, but to reestablish the reserve funds, which they need to keep for an operating cushion, to offset the fact that previous utilization had gone up very dramatically after COVID, more so than they expected. So that had drawn the fund balances down. Three point two percent out of the sixteen point four was to replenish those reserves. So maybe if they've reached alignment now, maybe there's one component of cost that we won't be dealing with for the coming year.
And you'll have that next month?
Pardon me? Well, this month, we'll learn this month.
And will that be a hard and fast, or no? That could change?
So it won't be a hard and fast, and it could change, but as I tried to mention a moment ago, typically, it's very close. So they typically come up with a pretty tight estimate, and it's a preliminary estimate. We don't know what the actual number will be until typically February of a calendar year, but in the years I've been in this job, it's never been much different from their, their initial estimate.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So yeah, we'll have that for you when we come back next. That's important because for our district, and you'll see in a moment on another chart, we spent, in the '25 budget, we spent seven million dollars on our eighty percent of the medical plan premiums. So of course, if that goes up by fifteen percent, we're adding a million dollars to annual costs. Yeah. Any other questions about medical? This is hope coming, but it's a couple of years away. Okay, pensions? The good news there is we do not anticipate any changes in the contribution rates, neither for the state pension plans themselves, nor for the wonderful second Rutland City Pension Plan that more than ninety percent of our teachers opt to participate in. We got a recent actuarial report by the consultant who oversees the finances of the Rutland City Pension Plan, and based on his report, he said no changes are necessary or recommended for the coming contribution rates.
Ted?
Yes?
Not that it matters because we can see it, but what you, on this? It's building and grounds.
Oh, I have, I've changed the order. Thank you for asking. I changed the order since the one that you got last Thursday, but I promise you I will cover it. As a matter of fact, I think that would be an excellent next topic. Thank you so much, Stephanie. I really appreciate that. So building, ground, and trans, but, but thank you, because if I had overlooked that, it would have been helpful to know that there was a disconnect, so I thank you for mentioning it. So building, grounds, and transportation, and IT. These are two of our larger service areas. As you probably recall, we spend more than two million dollars a year on building grounds and transportation, even in a non-ESR year. And IT is typically in the range of about eight hundred thousand a year in a non-ESR year. As Glenn had indicated to the building committee last week, he's in the process of looking over the priority needs in terms of repairs and upgrades to consider budgeting for '26 and even possibly '27. We'll be meeting with Glenn this month, and when we come back to you in November, we'll have a very detailed and specific set of recommendations in the context of managing our costs, but also keeping up with necessary maintenance so that ultimately, we don't defer things so long that they end up costing more money. And IT, once again, is doing an excellent job in terms of managing, you know, its life cycle costs. We're not anticipating any significant increase from our baseline IT spending of about three quarters of a million dollars to eight hundred thousand a year. We are, at Patricia Agner's recommendation, doing some realignment of the staffing structure to better address the nature of the IT service delivery needs today. For example, more time being spent on cybersecurity, as well as employee development. But Patricia is doing that and working with the business office and the central administration without any additional costs. So the net, the net cost will be zero. We're just realigning some things. So that's, that's a good news story. Special education, as Pam and others have told you, that will vary year to year just depending upon the mix of students and the services that are needed. So we'll be working with Pam and her team this month to work out those detailed plans and budgets. The one point I will mention, you know, you sometimes hear about unfunded mandates that come down from the AOE, where the AOE mandates that you do certain things, that they don't necessarily give you any money. I think a related term that, that I think is applicable is defunding mandates, where you have existing mandates, but they just decide to start reducing the funding that you get. And this is the case with our Census Block Grant. We know that between now and 2027, our district is receiving several hundred thousand dollars less per year in the Census Block Grant because of formula changes that the state decided to make, and it was their, their authority to do that. So we've built that into our plan, and, you know, we'll, we'll react accordingly. Food services is a pretty good story. Our meal costs for this year are going to go up about four and a half percent, which is in line with inflation per CPI for food outside the home. We rebid the contract in the spring and awarded it to the current, what was the current provider, Fresh Pick Switzen's. And so that's kind of, we had budgeted six percent for the year, so we might be able to save a little bit of money in that budget category for '25. The '26 costs will depend upon the CPI index because that's, again, an AOE mandate. They give us the index, and that sets the maximum percentage increase that food can go up, as adjusted for any changes in enrollment. So any questions or input in terms of those budget assumptions? Again, again, it reflects, I think, the, the very focused, continuous attention from year to year on, on keeping these things sustainable. Glenn Scott has found our first cost-saving Glenn Scott has found our first cost savings of the year. Congratulations, Glenn. So when he bid out the wood pellets contract, it actually came back at $292.50, $2.50 less than what we're paying this year. So we'll, we'll take those savings. The really important thing there too, outside of having a little fun, is that we are very fortunate that this district invested years ago in wood pellet boilers so that we can switch back and forth between wood pellets and fuel oil, depending upon what the relative economics are. And you don't hear us talk about that a lot, but that, that does save us operating money during the year. And Glenn's got a formula that he uses working with JCI, and he optimizes that. So that's very good. We are coming up on a five-year contract renewal for our copiers and printers. And so we'll be bidding that this spring. And because we typically spend many thousands of dollars per month on copiers and printers, we're hoping that we're going to save some money by taking that rebid opportunity to re-optimize the fleet and take a look at, do we need all the machines that we have? Can we have some newer, more efficient machines? And we're expecting to get some premium, some annual premium savings from a VHI-endorsed national vendor of life insurance and long-term disability. This vendor has worked with more than 70 other school districts already in the state of Vermont. And they've realized for savings of 20% in making the switch. So we're going to build that cost savings in. Tuitions, you know, we've taken a little bit of heat, or at least I've taken a little bit of heat in recent years by pushing up the tuition fees that we charged other schools who send their students to Rutland High School. We did that because for a number of years, we had probably lagged a little bit behind our escalating costs. And we realized we had gotten to the point where we were charging other schools less than our average cost. And so we moved those costs, those tuition costs up about 5% per year for a couple of years to bring that more in line so that Rutland City taxpayers would not be subsidizing taxpayers in other towns, much as we like to have their students. I think we have some good alignment already. There is one small area where we're going to review, working with Pam and her team, possible tuitions, and that is for special programs such as ASC. But, you know, we're, that's not as many students, and, but we will work that for those dollars. And then, of course, you always hear me say federal grants, that is a real key to optimizing our financials. You know, we can, we can add $10,000 worth of expenses as long as people bring $10,000 and one of federal grants because those don't hit our, our taxpayers. And Bianca McCain, of course, and the Business Office, we're working really closely together. And I put a word in there very intentionally to say the district's strategic use of available federal grants. Because there, as you can imagine from hearing the ESR conversations, the various title grants, other grants, they typically have some pretty specific conditions around what you can use them for naturally. So we take a look at our needs and we try to optimize strategically across those different requirements, the various needs that we have. And then there are smaller grants available, but we, we try and get them as best we can. For example, Visbit, our insurance cooperative, they offer various safety grants. We're going to get $10,000 this year because we satisfied several conditions to get a $10,000 safety grant, which is going to pay for some things here. So, you know, that's helpful. And then I know a number of members of the board continue to be very interested in electric school buses. We actually, a couple of years ago, applied for electric school bus grants. We didn't meet the threshold that EPA had. They had a, they had a poverty metric for us of 17%. How was only 17% and solo, I don't know. But it was a 20% minimum, so we didn't get the grant. But we still apply and we look at grants wherever possible. Because if we can get a bus for free, we'll take it. Okay. So let me talk very briefly. I don't want you to read all the stuff that's on this chart. I put a lot of stuff on here just for the optic effect to say, there's a lot of stuff here, okay? Because Act 183, the yield bill, established this Commission on the Future of Public Education in Vermont. This commission's going to be working for the next year and several months looking at the educational system, the delivery, the finances, the vision, the governance, everything you can think of, it's in their charge. All those bullet points that I've put there, they're quotes out of Act 183 that establishes the, the scope of this new commission. So we're going to be watching what they do very carefully because this mandate gives them basically a blank check to look at any aspect they want about education and how it's delivered and how it's paid for. So just to give you one example, you know, looking at tuition programs and changes. Oh, okay, well, hopefully if they look at our tuition programs, they'll, they'll think that we've priced them reasonably. But look at that, the last one. The role of public schools in the provision of education, social and emotional wellbeing. But those are really important areas. Would they look at those and say, hey, you're doing more? We should pay you more money for what you're doing? Or would they take a different approach? I don't know. But there are very significant aspects, fundamental aspects of our educational services and costs that, you know, they're going to be looking at. I'll tell you, my concern is that when I look at a list like that and I realize that they're supposed to come up with a final report and recommendation by December of 2025, that's not a lot of time for something that big. Perhaps they'll, perhaps they'll prioritize. Perhaps they'll pick off a few of these things and decide to really focus on delivering some solid solutions and recommendations, not for everything, but for some key aspects. We'll see. They are going to come up with some preliminary findings that they're going to release by this coming December. But of course, hopefully by then, our budget will be fairly final. You'll still be able to change it between then and January if you wish. But they're just going to be preliminary findings. And of course, they could change in the following year. Any questions or comments about the commission? Okay. So real quick here now, back of the envelope estimates. There's a couple of dollar numbers in yellow on this chart. Those are in yellow because those are the only numbers that won't change. Everything else is going to change because these are high-level estimates. But our current budget's almost 64 million. As I told you, medical plan costs are probably at a million. Other employee compensation, level servicing, probably a million and a quarter to a million and three quarters based upon our best estimates of salary increases and other cost benefits increases. Mentioned the block rents going down, which is less of an offset to costs. A modest rate of inflation on our direct instructional costs of several million dollars, and our special ed costs could easily add $300,000. I'm hoping that our food services costs will be about flat if, if it tracks a slight enrollment decline. IT expect to be flat. Of course, we had budgeted for this year $400,000 to complete the turf field project, and that will not be in 26. So that would tend to be a reduction for the 26 budget, not because we're saving money, it's just the absence of an item. And then we're working with Glenn on the buildings, grounds and transportation. You add up those factors, and we've got a range of about $2.5 to $3 million of increases, that would be just under 5%. And just for your interest, some of you may be aware, but last week, Otter Valley School Board met. And they are also targeting to have a level service budget as they're going in plan. Their estimated change year to year is about 6%. So we're in that ballpark. Ours is probably a little bit lower because again, of the absence of the turf field, $450,000. But, you know, to, to keep, to keep total costs going up by 5% or less, given the, the labor contracts that we have built in, the, you know, medical costs that we're obligated to incur, you know, it, it's a challenge. But as tight as it will be, I think we've got a reasonable shot to get there, and we'll know a lot more next month. So that's kind of a, a quick run-through of what we're thinking about and where we think we're going. And we'll have, you'll have much more opportunity to give us feedback, both in November and of course, December. But can I answer any other questions for you this evening? I really appreciate your time. And again, if you think of something, please let us know because we welcome all ideas. I appreciate your, your attention.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you.
And we have Melissa and Glenn from Stafford.
Good evening. Melissa Conner-Brittner of Stafford. So each year, we come to you this month and give you kind of an overview of our adult education program that we offer in the evenings and in the daytime. So as you may recall, Bill Lucci had filled that position, and he retired back in January. And I was very excited to hire Gwen Hagenbarth as our Assistant Director of Adult Education as of July 1. So she has joined us, and she has hit the ground running. And she's here to share about what's happening in the world of adult ed.
Hello. I'm happy to be here. I just wanted to let you know, give you an update on the programs that were already running when I started in July. We had an LNA program that was running and actually just completed September 12. And I got information from Georgia Olson, who was the instructor, that all of our students that were in that course all passed the state exam and have their license. So that was really good news. And then the CDL program has been ongoing. That is our, our highest enrollment. In fact, when I wrote this report, there were like 15 students in it at that time. We have two more starting, one started this past weekend, two more starting this coming weekend. One just completed the program and has their license. So it's, it's revolving. And it's a, I have to tell you, it's the program, when I, I'm there in the office, I get calls about that program almost daily. People are interested in whether it's CDL, A, B, or B to A, which I learned the difference after my first, after my first day there. And then our aesthetics program runs out of the woods at Killington. It's a beautiful place. If you haven't been there and experienced that program. All these programs, I've met with the instructors, I've gone to their classes, I've sat in and talked with the students too. There's a lot of good things going out, going on out there. These are really dedicated instructors that are experts in their field. And they're, they're doing this to help the community. So there's employers out there that need people, and there's people out there that need the jobs. And putting the two together is just a really wonderful experience that, it's wonderful that we're able to offer that. Cosmetology is, is a program that runs for two years, and we break it up in the middle basically to support VSAC funding to help students be able to afford it. And so that's been going, going strong. And they take a couple of field trips and they're going to see, like, go to see some products and things like that, kind of field trips. And they're doing well. They, they'll be halfway through in around February. Our relationship with GE and using our building to do their apprenticeship programs is an amazing relationship, and that's going really well. We have six classes right now operating out of Stafford at the Technical Center that are helping the GE apprenticeship programs. They're listed there. And, and then our phlebotomy, and we were really happy to get that going. So some of the programs start because they were there and they were initiated already. Some of them, there's demands, you get calls from the community, and they're interested in having these programs. And phlebotomy was one of them where it's either not necessarily individuals, but even the area businesses that need them, like the nursing homes or the hospital. So we're lucky to have Courtney Dumas doing that for us. And then she's also going to do it again in the spring. We have eight students in there, and that's, that's a good size for a phlebotomy class. And, and hopefully we'll have at least that many in the spring. Welding is a great program. I've learned a lot about welding. We have really good instructors for welding, and they're also our daytime instructors. And so we have a, a series of classes that we're providing for welding. Right now, the intro is happening. We have nine students in there, that's a nice size. And then the other thing that we offer for welding, because we have Tony Bosnic, is our, it's our certification. And he's one of two folks in our state that are able to offer that certification. So we're really fortunate to have him. And we have other technical centers that are sending, Hartford's sending students next week to do, to get their certifications, and Tony's doing it for them. So again, we have a lot of really good folks here that are already in this program. And I'm learning and getting to meet and getting to know the programs, and it's, it's really nice. The other thing that we have is online courses. Ed2Go is the, well, it's Senegage Learning. Some of these courses are separate where people call in and they're just taking individual courses. And some of them complement our, our programs themselves. Like LNA has a portion where they do an online, and so does, so does the CDL program, and so do a couple others. And basically, unfortunately, pottery, we thought we were going to be running it, didn't get enough interest. That's not a certification program, that's just more of a interest for the community. Maybe it can happen again in a, in a few months. And then our welding program, like I said, there's a series of four classes. So one's now, and then it ends in like November, and then another one starts up. And they're all like five or six weeks. The interesting thing about LNA is I got in contact with someone from the Medig Nursing Home up in Randolph. They, they actually contacted us, interested in running an LNA program out of that area. Made sure that Randolph wasn't, Randolph Technical Center wasn't going to be doing that, and they weren't. So they reached out to us. Our instructor will be doing that starting in November. And it will be like 10 weeks, that program. And then we hope to run another LNA program here on the Stafford campus in the spring. Our CCMA program was apparently something that was kind of homegrown from Stafford under Bill Lucci and, and the folks there when he was here. And so anyway, that should be starting up in November. There's a series of different instructors that run these 10 modules. And then there's a testing that happens in April. Another one that was interest that I got from folks in Randolph and folks from around here is the MNA, the Medication Nursing Assistance. So we're looking into that right now. And I believe that we're going to have an instructor from the Stafford Day Program. And we're just trying to get it all together so we can offer that program relatively soon. And that's what I have. One of the things that I've been doing besides getting to know the programs and the instructors and going to see what's going on, we're looking into systems and how they're working and our fees and our tuitions. I've been in contact with VSAC to make sure that if we up our tuitions, which we're probably going to need to do that, that it would still work for students of need to have, to get the, the grants or the money that they need for the classes. We're making sure that we're not overstepping. Advertising is another place where we're looking into things. Basically, all this is happening because it was already established before I got here, and people are calling. And the, the reputation of the adult ed program is why this is all happening right now. So I'm looking into what we can do to sustain it, what we can do to get more programs and more enrollment. Right now, we're using, our website's great, and we've been working with Greg doing the website. That's been wonderful. And most people that I, when they call, I ask, where did you hear from us? And it's the website, or it's word of mouth. It also helps that I'm, we're part of VACTIA, which is the Vermont Adult Career Technical Ed Association. There's a, there's a whole new world of acronyms that come with this world too. So anyway, but that's great because it's all the adult ed centers in the state, and we get together and we talk about the needs. And then there's also a website for them, and they advertise us there. And they also send folks, and we can send folks to them for programs that are, we're offering and others are offering and so forth. And I think that's about all that I was going to share with you, unless you have some questions. Yes?
Marisa, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for that report. I'm learning so much about Stafford. I was very nice and didn't realize that we had adult education in addition to our day programs. This is really cool. So you said people can find out more on your website, right? Has Stafford worked with the city officials like the mayor, the Board of Aldermen on what jobs are needed in Rutland County, in Rutland area specifically?
Yes, I'm, well, there's different commissions that have contacted me and that I'm looking into meeting with folks. Actually, I'm meeting with Vermont Adult Learning tomorrow. And there's, yes, there's a lot of groups out there that I am currently looking into.
And also, Mayor Dundas is on our regional advisory board. So he is a regular participant in that. And we also, the adult ed program, we're part of the grant that the Rutland Planning Commission, Rutland Regional Workforce Investment Board.
That, ah, yes.
$1.2 million grant. So Stafford. $1.2 million dollar grant. So Stafford adult ed is a huge part of that, and we'll be offering those free boot camps.
Amazing. Thank you for doing that.
Just want to say welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think Megan and I are up next. So Megan and I are going to talk a bit tonight about early education. It's been a while, I think, since the board has heard much about what we're doing for our very youngest learners. Megan is our Coordinator of Support Services for birth through grade two for the northeast side of the city. She oversees all of the younger programs, the triple E programs, that's early essential education, and then the northeast special education. So Megan's going to start. Right over there.
I can't read.
I can't read either.
You're too young.
Yeah, and then there.
Takes a team.
So as the triple E coordinator, we have a triple E team. They work primarily out of VAC. So the staff we have up there, some are full-time and some are part-time employees. So for our full-time employees, we have two special educators and two speech and language pathologists and two paraeducators. Myself and the OT and PT aren't full-time at triple E. We bounce around.
And we have, at the Vermont Chief and Center, we rent classroom space so that we're able to offer a preschool there for our children.
Pam is stealing my thunder here. We're going to our program at VAC. So part of our role is to provide outreach services to daycares and preschool programs within Rutland City limits. So my staff, while they have a program out of VAC that we're going to talk about in just a minute, they push into nine different daycare and preKs around the city. So for example, if we have a student that might need speech services, that speech and language pathologist might push into Head Start for a half hour or fifteen minutes, however the service is broken down in their IEP a couple times a week. We also partner with Child Integrative Services, which is similar to like a Rutland Mental Health Service. They offer early intervention services for kids from birth to age three, and then the students transition from age three into Rutland City's Special Ed Program. We also collaborate with Rutland Mental Health Case Management. Right now, we serve forty-nine students, well, children. I guess they're still students. They're enrolled via special instruction. I imagine that number will probably be about sixty by the end of the school year.
I just have a question. Is it, so it's nine, you work in nine daycares or preschools within the city only? Or are these, how are these preschools or daycares paired with you?
Good question. So students, in order to get specialized instruction from our school district, have to be a city resident, right? So it's the same way that if you go to Rutland Intermediate School, you have to be a Rutland City student. In the event that, you know, your child goes to maybe Wallingford pre-K or to a daycare in Wallingford, but they're still on a Rutland City IEP because you live on Granger Street, you can come into the VAC at first scheduled service time, and the girls at VAC will work hard to try and accommodate family schedules so that you can still get your specialized instruction. But they don't travel without, out of the city limits.
So if you have a child, I mean, this doesn't apply to me, but anyone watching, who goes to a private daycare or childcare center, and they suspect there may be an issue, they could, would be welcome to come to the VAC and seek out, provided they are a Rutland City resident?
So provided that they're a Rutland City resident, the first step would be to reach out, if you suspect a disability, for an evaluation planning meeting. At that eval plan meeting, we discuss what the concerns are for disability, and any child, under the law, child fine, the district has responsibility to look into that and provide the evaluation free of cost. So that would be the route, is to contact me or Pam, and we would first set up that eval plan meeting.
Very cool.
First step, do not go into private daycares or homes, just out of, you know, we follow the state regs.
Right. But good to know that if someone goes to grandma's daycare or the next door neighbor's daycare, a Rutland City resident would still have the opportunity if they suspected need to go in and seek help.
Absolutely. And I find that doctors' offices are very equipped for that knowledge, too. So, you know, I get information from a child pediatrician pretty regularly.
Cool, thank you.
So our program out of VAC runs five days a week. It alternates days. So our pre-K kiddos, which would be age three, or I'm sorry, or age four, go Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, and we currently have eight kiddos in that program. And our preschool program, which is age three, that operates Wednesdays and Fridays, and our current enrollment for there is seven.
Are these considered, sorry, are these considered date, pre-K, so they fall under the two-day-a-week tuition-free, or are these considered private?
It's, you consider UPK.
So the nine that we go to, those would be independent preschools? The ones that Megan is referencing, those are for children who are eligible or in need of support or services, but they are, would be considered public? The pre-K. So you know what I'm referencing, that I'm not titling it? Yes. Act 166. Yep, so the ten hours a week. Correct. Correct. So these are not, that's not part of? This is not part of that, okay. We're going to talk about that. That's about pre-K for all students. Yes, thank you.
Sorry, the triple E program at VAC is different from universal pre-K. But we do have to follow all state regulations in.
Of course. Right, it's a registered. Yeah.
All of our students who do attend the VAC program for pre-K, we call it Rutland City Early Essential Education Program, RECEP, great acronym, are eligible for special education. So here's an example of a lesson plan in our program. So it's not just daycare. You know, we have a full-time general educator that leads the classroom in support of two paras, and then the special educators and SLPs go in and out to provide services. We follow the gold standards, so similar to how Rutland City students get a report card, our students at our VAC program also get a report card, so to say. And here are some of the standards up on the PowerPoint that Amy Hall, our general educator, would mark students on, in addition to those students getting a special ed progress report that documents their progress. So our kiddos that are in our triple E program at VAC, they're getting seven different ways to mark progress throughout their, so to say, academic year. So that's a lot of intervention for those guys when they come into kindergarten. Here, they had an apple adventure, so Amy Hall, the general educator, really wanted to emphasize that it was a whole lesson that she had planned. So they went out into the field behind VAC, they found an apple tree, they problem solved how they were going to get down the apples, because, you know, they're all pretty tiny. Once they got the apples down, they court them out as a team, we filled them with baking soda, and they talked about acids and bases to see the explosion with the apples.
That's so cool. I want to try it.
Do you have an experiment during our next board meeting?
Next time I'm on my own.
Have to take a field trip tonight.
All right, so any further questions for me, or I'll pass it over to Pam?
I read your mind with the, you did, exactly. So I'm going to just talk a little bit about universal pre-K. So right now, we have Act 166, and that's Vermont's pre-K education law. It was passed in 2014. It ensures that every child ages three, four, and five who are not registered for kindergarten have access to early learning opportunities in a pre-qualified pre-K program that's approved by the state at no cost to the family. And so that's no fewer than ten hours a week, and it's for thirty-five weeks a year, at least. Act 166 requires that school districts partner with community-based private childcare programs that have been approved by the state to help serve our children. And for each child that's enrolled in a pre-qualified, they like the pre a lot, pre-qualified pre-K program, the school district is obligated to pay a tuition for the expenses of their ten hours a week. And that is set by the state, which this year is $3,884. And again, that amount is set to cover their full cost. We currently serve eighty-one children through our universal pre-K partnerships. And since I'm here, I'm going to take a few minutes to alert you to some legislation that will likely change the landscape of our pre-K programs. It reminds me of Ted's Act 183 that he talked about earlier. It's this act that charged a committee to design an implementation plan to expand what we offer to our youngest learners. Specifically, the bill seeks to provide full-day educational programs to all four-year-olds through the public education system. And it could be that we all offer, that we, Rutland City Public Schools, offers universal pre-K as part of our system, or it could be that we contract with providers in our community to provide it, but it would be at the public school responsibility. So the committee is comprised of stakeholders in all different types of roles, and their report is due on December 1st. It came out of legislation from 2023. So they have, they've had about eighteen months to work on that. I'm very anxious to see what the results are.
And how long are we going to have to work on it?
So the bill says implementation in the fall of 2026. Oh my goodness. So we'll see what the committee's recommendations are. I imagine that it's going to be a huge area of focus for the 2025 legislative session. So my thoughts go to, because I just recently came out of being that mom, figuring out pre-K now that everyone is in school. But the struggle is to utilize this program, you have to find programs that are either public or that accept it. What programs do we have in Rutland City that utilize this program now? So who are our community partners? Yes. Okay. So we have children at Little Lambs, we have children at, I'm trying to think of others.
Stafford.
Yeah. So it's just Stafford and Little Lambs? The area childcare programs, as long as they're pre-qualified, we can partner with them. I remember being, like just two years ago, trying to figure out how the best way to utilize it, but didn't, as a mom who wasn't on a board and didn't have all of that information, ended looking into Killington Elementary, because that is a public school option. Barstow is a public school option, but I wasn't aware, other than Little Lambs, of any other one in Rutland. Yeah, I know we've had hearts in mind. I mean, there's been several. There are more, yeah. Okay. Right now, we don't have a pre-K coordinator. Bianca assumes that responsibility. But that is a concern we often hear. Yeah, and what happens is- Especially for kids with any kind of a need. Correct. And if you're sending your kiddo to a different town, you fall at their waitlist because their residents get priority, or you have to pay because private preKs don't utilize this program or can't utilize this program. It will be interesting to see how this. It's going to be a huge expense, though. I mean, yeah, so it will be interesting.
Has there been discussion here about developing an on-campus pre-K program?
Has there been discussion? I think very high level, in part because of the space, the expense, for all those reasons. I mean, I remember going to something twenty years ago that John Stempak presented about providing universal pre-K, and it was very controversial at that time. I think philosophically, I'm a huge fan. I think we need to work through a lot of logistics in order to make it a reality, including the financial piece.
Karen?
I just had two comments. So for this program, does it have to be a state-registered daycare facility?
It has to be a pre-qualified.
Pre-approved.
Pre-approved. It's going to be a pre-pre-pre- pre-K program. Yes, so it has to go through all of the rigor of being approved by the state before we can partner with them.
Okay. And then the other part about whether you would use community partners or whether the school district would do it. I would have some real concerns about our liability and responsibility if we're handing it over to someone else, but ultimately, it falls on Rutland City schools. But you're right, the space and the costs.
Yeah, if you look at how many kindergarten classrooms we have, imagine if we have to offer the same for all four-year-olds.
And I would suspect the enrollment would be pretty high, because why would people be sending their children to private daycares and paying if they can, yeah, this report should be interesting and scary.
But with interest, I sat on the committee for about a year, and what's interesting about it is that it, there was a confusion between, is this to decide whether or not it should happen? It's not. The charge is, how is it going to happen?
Till they've already made their mind up.
Right. So unless something happens at the legislative session, we'll see what comes out.
Now, is the other committee who's studying how we're going to fund public education?
Are they talking to each other?
Are they talking to each other? Are they figuring the cost of that in there? Probably not.
So that could essentially go affect our budget for '26.
Seven, yeah, yeah, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. So we have another budget.
We could get out ahead of it and just talk about whether we want to figure it out on campus. I think there's a need in the community.
There's certainly a need.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other, like Karen, you'd mentioned concern about handing it over. There aren't enough spots to hand it to.
Right. And just being able to give the kids that even earlier access to all the things.
Well, and equal access.
And equal access, yes.
Or equitable access on both of those things.
And I don't think that could happen if you've got kids here and kids in this program, you know. I don't, regardless of what state mandates, do things change when they're in the home or in the daycare?
So I was just, maybe it's, I don't know where to refer it to, but with the budget, I mean, maybe it's something we want to discuss.
I think we should wait until whatever they-
I think we should see what the report says.
And then I think we should form a separate committee of, yeah, make it a separate committee, because I think it's going to be a lot of work.
The second report is due out. It's actually, we thought it was going to be out this week. So the second draft.
Can you send us a copy of that?
If I can, yeah.
That would be great.
And we'll put it on the agenda for the next full board meeting.
Okay.
We can vote on establishing a committee, or I think I can establish a special committee. I'll figure that out. Did you want to?
I was going to say just rough, really probably bad math. If you take our, if you take our current budget and you divide it by thirteen, right, thirteen grades, you know what I mean?
All right.
And we add it, you know, it's about, again, that's not what we actually spend. You know, we probably spend more for the younger kids, right? I would guess.
Right, I mean, the ratio is going to be much smaller.
Right. So even if it's bad math, and we take the budget and divide it by thirteen, it's like five million, it's like five million dollars a, you know, a grade. And so if we, again, if it's, if the ratios that we spend more, the younger grades would be more than that. I think Ted had a comment on that.
You know, one of the things we'll have to think about, to Stephanie's point about, does it impact the '26 budget? Okay, the program might not start until the fall of '26, but what does the spending pattern look like?
Implement it, purchase it.
And this will also require a lot of teachers. So I think this will tap into, if we could get an adult program at Stafford for triple E teachers, that could help us start to fund or provide teachers for this upcoming.
So I think there's a lot to be determined with regard to pre-K. It's exciting.
Marisa, on your point, I'm not doing a commercial for Vermont State University, but we do. Because they knew there was, you know, we recognize that there is a need for this, long before this even, you know, with UPK, like we, it was, it's been a need. So Stafford's great, too, you know. Yeah, but I think it needs, you know, an actual four-year degree with a license, you know. Yeah, but I think it needs, you know, an actual four-year degree with a license, you know, so. Again, I'm thinking, like, the, think about all of the community partners we have that will then lose that business, right? Like, I mean, this has huge implic, I'm, I'm not, just huge implications, having nothing to do with us sitting around this board, but like, it's, it's a huge, huge change.
The committee also-
And again, a good, a good, you know, well-intended.
The committee also has representatives from private, independent home care and independent preschools on it, and certainly that's been, but again, the, the, the charge wasn't a debate, do we, don't we, it was, how do we?
So, you know, if, if I decided I want to put my child into this pre-K program, do, does a parent have that choice, or is it going to be like a mandate?
They would have the same choice. They would have the choice, just like any, can do it in first grade, second grade, you know, any grade. A student can, a parent can choose not to have their child go to school.
But then they have to register as a homeschool.
Correct, but currently, the law is set so that you don't have to register for school until you get age six.
Okay.
So you can choose.
So they changed that.
So thank you, thank you for hearing our conversation about early ed. It's a very exciting time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Megan.
Moving on to our building report, Sarah.
That's me. Okay, the building committee met on October first. Committee members, myself, Justine Franco, and Kathy Solso, Karen Bossi, and Stephanie Stoolie were absent. We also had Heather Hauck, Mary Beth Lennox Levens, Charlene Seward, and several other members of the administration present. Uh, the, the, we called the meeting to order at five oh nine. Glenn shared with us about the wood pellets that Ted mentioned, the bus replacement RFP, which we approved in our consent agenda. We talked about radon inspections, which is a thing that is being required of the schools. There was a lot of conversation about it, but it's a thing that's gonna be happening. Glenn went over five-year capital planning. Our meeting went a little long, because there's a lot of planning ahead, and that guy is, that guy's busy. He's got a lot of stuff that he's looking at, and he's, so if anybody wants to, there's a slide available. I'm sure Glenn has the slide he can share with you, if anybody wants to see the massive things that he has in his brain right now. We talked about elevator modernization. We discussed the merits of, of the current elevators that are in the buildings. Whether we fix them, we upgrade them, or we replace them altogether, there was a lot of discussion about what's the most responsible thing to do now, what needs to be done immediately, and what, what's the best course of action? Because obviously, the bigger thing you do, the more it costs, and, you know, budget's a big thing right now. So there was a lot of discussion about that, and we're, we will continue to talk about that. We talked about capital plans, and that was also with the five-year capital planning that he gave us a short list for each campus, things that need to be done. I'm just gonna hit one or two things, things like here in Longfellow, our big old windows are going to, we're gonna have to address those at some point, because they are old. We need to do something with them, because they're not efficient. Things like Northeast has dips that needs repaired, masonry that needs to be repaired. RHS has things in the kitchen. There's transport and maintenance things that have to be addressed, so there's lots of things up and coming. Glenn's got a whole big thing, big plan, and so we're gonna be talking about that over the future. I just wanted to mention, with budget season coming up, I think it's important, when we go into these committee meetings, there's a lot of conversation that goes on about, is it efficient to have electric buses? Is it practical to have electric buses yet? And the answer is always, we are talking about that, we are looking at that, we're weighing the costs and the benefits. And on a small note, which I think Mary Beth is gonna touch on also, the ESER money that we spent over the last three years, I think it was, was it ninety-nine percent? We spent ninety-nine percent of the money that we were granted, which is insane, that we were that efficient. And there's, oh gosh, I just lost his name, Rob Bliss, Abby, Abby, and also Bianca, who's finishing up the process. Those three have been, like, essential in getting that money and using it. And I just want everybody to know that the spending that happens in our school is thoughtful. Our schools are aging, our buildings need upgrades. There's forethought, planning, and research that goes into all of these projects. And it's worth repeating, as we come into the budget season, and we're hoping for a good outcome on Town Meeting Day, that our schools have responsible, thoughtful, and dedicated people working on planning and funding. And it's all in the spirit of making sure that our children are safe and they're well taken care of as possible in our school building. So I just want that to be said publicly, that the spending that happens is very responsible and very well planned and very well thought out. So with that, we closed our meeting at six twenty-eight. And our next meeting is planned for November fifth at five o'clock, which is also General Election Day, and everybody needs to get out and vote before five o'clock, so you can come to the meeting, talk about that. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, I just was thinking, on other, other years, we have not had a meeting on Town Meeting Day.
Yes, we talked about that, but everybody was kinda like.
People thought they were-
Because ours is early and usually short.
Yeah, I don't think we should.
No, it just seems like.
Well, yeah, you do have some people out campaigning if you're running for offices and stuff, so.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I don't know.
We're meeting that night, too, finance, strategic planning.
Yeah, we haven't in the last four years that I've put on the board.
Do we just skip it, or do we reschedule?
We need to have them.
We usually move it to a different day.
So why don't we wait for Bill to get back? He can coordinate with you two and find a day that works?
Yes, yeah, maybe we could do it the week before.
Oh, that's hilarious.
We'll talk about it. Yeah, we'll discuss. We'll discuss.
So thank you for your report. And Mary Beth, you're up with finance and strategic planning.
Great, thanks, Kathy. So we also met last Tuesday, the, yeah, last Tuesday, the October first, and we discussed the preliminary outlook and assumptions for the district's fiscal year twenty-six budget, which of course Ted's presentation hit on pretty hardcore tonight. And we're discussed by the committee, of course. So also a part of last week's meeting, Controller Tim Smith provided an update on the status of the district's ESER grant utilization, which Sarah just referenced also. Tim reported that of the eleven point three million dollars, eleven point three million of ESER III funds made available to Rutland City Public Schools for fiscal year twenty-three through September thirty of this year, the district did utilize eleven point two million, or again, ninety-nine percent, so that's incredible. I don't, I'm slightly competitive, so I would love to see how other districts utilize that money. And so, go Glenn, go, you know, like you said, Abby and Rob and Bianca for making sure that we got the most literal bang for our buck on that. So it's good stuff. So Tim acknowledged the extensive planning and coordination, obviously among many members of the administration, who contributed to making the most of the funds within the, the tight time limits. And, and also within many federal requirements, right? With all grant money, there are a lot of details and requirements that need to be met. It's not just like, here, here's eleven point three million dollars, spend it how you wish. You certainly need to, to follow the rules, and so that makes the ninety-nine percent even that much more impressive. As part of the budget planning for fiscal year twenty-six, the business office is also researching best practices used by other school districts for establishing a possible reserve fund that could be dedicated for future capital improvements and major equipment repairs. And that research is continuing, and that continues to go along the theme that Sarah mentioned in terms of the responsible use of our, use of our money and foresight and planning that this district does, and this board does, and our administrators do, to ensure that we're using all of our money granted to us by the state and taxpayers in an extremely responsible way, for sure. So we are looking really how to, how to use that money to its fullest and be as transparent as possible in the use of that money. During the preliminary budget update that did happen, that didn't get covered tonight, was our IT Director Patricia Egner provided a recap of plans to realign the IT team roles. Actually, Ted did mention this tonight, I'm sorry, Ted did mention this tonight, to be more consistent with current demands and functions of the IT group. Looking to, as, as Ted mentioned, enhance service delivery and enhance employee development with no additional cost, no net gain on that in terms of cost. So I thought that was really important to note, that they're just being, IT is being extremely creative and efficient with the use of their budget and, and giving us more. Our next meeting is, was gonna be November fifth, but I think we're gonna discuss when that might be. And that is it. Thanks so much. Thanks, Ted. Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, well, policy, as the acting chair that night, as I lost a nose goes. It was fun. So we, you know, and, you know, we called the meeting to order at five on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, reviewed several policies. Two of them are gonna be coming back to us on our next meeting on October fifteenth at five. Policy sixty-one ten and sixty-two fourteen. Besides that, I feel a very good time was had by some due to all of the grammatical updates that we got to make.
Any questions? Yeah, so can I have a motion to move those to second, those policies listed to second reading? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, any unfinished business? And new business? We would like to introduce Elaine Pickney, who is on our screen. She's our consultant, gonna help us with our superintendent search. And if you could pass these down, this is a proposed timeline and description of the process we'll move through.
Elaine, can I just check to make sure that you can hear us okay? Okay, I can't hear you, so that would be, could you, just check to make sure you're unmuted.
Turn up volume.
I can hear you on my computer, but not through the television.
Thank you. Oh, we don't have speakers. The what?
Where it says Samsung audio? We're gonna just check to see if we can hook up some external speakers. Here is Bill when you need him. Comes on, it might be really loud. Somebody text Bill and tell him how essential he is to our meeting.
We could.
Seems like he's a bit off. Am I sure my computer has discs attached? It's on where?
Oh, yeah, it's connected to his computer. Uh, oh, yeah, I feel, we could have probably just switched it over to the. Does it still sound? Oh, no, it actually did say Samsung, though. I should have said that.
Can you hear? Elaine, can you talk for a second?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
Yeah, okay. I'm trying different speakers. All right, try it again.
Okay, here I am.
Okay.
That's weird.
I'm trying to get some more cord here.
I think, um, Zoom has like a weird thing where most of it will come out of like whatever you were previously.
All right, talk again, Elaine. Karen, can you? I've just turned it on.
I gotta plug them in, I think. That's okay, those are my cheap ones.
Be there in just a second.
This is like one of the highlights.
This doesn't work.
Mostly, I had a rabbiting.
That's a good picture. Any better? Elaine, go ahead and talk.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
That's better. That's good enough. Thank you. Thank you, Peanut Gallery.
Okay, I will speak up, if that helps. Well, nice to meet you all. I look forward to the day when I can be sitting in a room with you.
Yeah.
Elaine Pickney, I am the consultant that's working with the board and with a committee to find your next great superintendent. My background is, I retired as the superintendent of the Champlain Valley School District three years ago, after fifteen years as a superintendent. Prior to that, I had been the Deputy Commissioner of Education at the Department of Ed when it was still a department for three years. I've been a principal in Williston, Vermont, Stowe, Vermont, and Morristown, Vermont, for probably a total of ten, eleven years. And I was a primary teacher, middle school teacher, science and literacy teacher, and actually for a little bit, before I became a principal the second time around, the enrichment coordinator in Stowe. So I've had lots of experience. I've been doing superintendent searches since I retired, obviously as a superintendent and as a principal. I did a lot of searches. I work with the Vermont School Boys Association in doing these searches, meaning that they hire me, and then I, they, you know, I contract out with them to do the work. So I'm looking forward to doing this with you. I thought tonight, I know you've got the timeline in front of you, but I thought I would just go over it very quickly. And then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. So on the first of September, I met with Mary Beth and Kathy to kind of go over the timeline. And at that time, there were no dates in here. There was just, here's the process, here's the timeline. I think we might have made a couple changes as a result of that conversation. And I guess it's important to say at the front end that I've never done a search where somewhere along the line, some change wasn't made, because we fine-tune it to the situation, something comes up, the committee says, wouldn't it be better? We discuss it, and so after that first meeting, I had a subsequent meeting with Kathy and Karen to just kind of answer any other questions. And I submitted this timeline, and the timeline that's here is based on the fact that I was told you would like to have this new superintendent hired by the first of the year, or at least in early January. And to make that happen, really you have to finish in December, mid-December, because otherwise, the end of December, beginning of January are just about no man's land. So that's, these dates are based on that. Obviously, this is your search. You could say, no, no, we don't want to do it that way. But here we go, I'm gonna go through them. So the next thing that's gonna happen in this whole process is for the board to, the board or the board reps, that's up to you, will determine the screening committee. The screening committee should be a group of ten to fourteen people. That's really the ideal size. More than fourteen is unwieldy. I know that you've just done an assistant superintendent search where you had many more than that. And, and apparently it went very well, so I'm not doubting that. But really, fourteen is the optimal size. More than that gets unwieldy. And that group, though, should be a comprehensive group. It should be made up of board members, faculty and staff members, administrators, community members, parents. And hopefully, when you put out the invitation, you know, to serve on this committee, you'll get a lot of response, and then that will be- to serve on this committee, you'll get a lot of response. And then that will be the responsibility of the, either the three board, I would assume the three board reps, but it could be a committee of the board, to determine that the committee is representative, that you do have all of the, you know, various stakeholders that you want represented. The next thing that happens is a survey of the community. And I mean that in a, in a really broad sense, the community members who are, who have kids in school, those who don't, faculty and staff, everyone. We do disaggregate the data so that the committee can see what the responses were, but we ask them some really simple questions. We start with a blurb about like the work that you're doing, why we're doing this survey. And we ask them, what are the skills that you want in this new superintendent? And we list a bunch of skills, and we say, pick three, because that forces, otherwise, end up with 100 skills and, you know, that's not really that helpful. We do the same thing with attributes. And then we do have an open-ended, is there something else you want to tell us? And from that information, to me, that's really important, because that then sets the stage for reviewing applicants. It sets the stage even before reviewing applicants. It sets the stage for writing the post, for posting the position. It sets the stage for determining what questions we'll ask. And it sets the stage for rating the candidates. So it kind of like helps us in the story that we're gonna tell at the end, about, we asked you what you were looking for, and we use that to inform our work. And now here, board is our, are our recommended candidates for you to interview. After that happens, already mentioned posting the position, I just slotted this in here, because that's important, ongoing communication. There ought to be a website, I'm sure there is, where we will include information that could be available for anybody to know. For example, the date of the posting, for example, the charge to the committee, for example, committee membership. And at some point, here are our finalist candidates. But that's a place to communicate with the public. The first screening committee meeting, and these dates are important, so I put two dates there, either one can work for me. That's, will be, you know, conversation with Karen, Mary Beth, and Kathy in our next meeting. But that first meeting is really important, because it really frames the search. It really helps establish, it's the board that hires the superintendent. It really, technically, by statute, is the only position you really hire. The superintendent hires all the other positions, brings them to you, you can say no. But it's the superintendent who does that work. But this is the position that you hire. And in my experience, and I've probably done a dozen searches now, it's really important to be really clear about that at the front end, that this is a committee that is going to make a recommendation to the board about viable candidates. It's not gonna say, here's our top choice, and thank you very much, we've decided. So that first meeting is very important for that. It establishes the ground rules. We review what the, you know, legal considerations are. We'll review the information that we receive from the survey. And we'll look at the posting. And we will do a little School Spring tutorial. Probably everybody knows how to use School Spring, but we'll just do that. And then there will be some homework. And when we invite, the board invites membership to this committee, they'll make sure that people know what is being asked of them, that they'll have to attend the meetings that you see here, and that they'll have to do some homework in between. So the homework is about reviewing questions, reviewing candidates, rating candidates, all of that. The next meeting of the committee is reviewing applications to select who's gonna get interviewed for the first round. And again, like they will have done homework, that they will have rated these candidates based on the information we got in the survey. They'll determine the interview process. And I guess determine is interesting, because I will share with them, here's how I think it works best. And pretty much it goes the same way every time. And that's true whether I'm doing the search, or, you know, I've been part of other searches. And develop interview questions and scenarios that's most likely to get us, you know, the information that we need from the candidates. And then the interviews. So there's one date there, but if you had a lot of candidates, that might be more than one date. After that first round of interview, obviously, there's a discussion about who's gonna get moved forward, and a conversation about what else do we need to know? And how will we find out what it is that we still need to know? Is it a site visit to Rutland? I highly recommend that. Is it a site visit to that person's place of business? Maybe, maybe not. Mostly, and that is totally a decision that the committee, influenced highly by the board members who are on the committee, will make. But mostly, people don't do that so much. Go visit the place that they're working. There are other ways to find that information out. Do a full bore candidate reference check. And I've done that two ways, and I'm open to either. One way is I do all of the reference checks, and I do a summary to the committee. Or I do the reference check that might be to a superintendent, if the candidate isn't a superintendent, and ask a board, a board member to call a board member from the other, the person's board. I might ask a principal to call another principal, and then I coordinate all that. And I'm, I've done it both ways. Both ways work. That's really a matter of like what people either are used to or feel most comfortable with. And then it's turned over to you. Viable candidates. So I always say, do not waste the board's time with candidates that you know are not viable. And that can happen. It can happen that you end up with one candidate. It can happen that you'll end up with three candidates. But that, the, in my mind, what determines that is, are they viable? Can they do the work that you need to be done in the way that you want the work done in Rutland City? And if the answer to that is, no, they're doing a really good job there, but like this is, it's a totally different world, or gee, you know, sometimes people say, oh, the measure of my success is how many people I send to the board. That's not the measure of success. So one of the things that I will say when we're doing that training session, and I will say to you, if you have 100 candidates, and not a single one of them really is the candidate that's going to be the right fit for you in Rutland City, and, you know, keep moving forward, you didn't have a great candidate pool. But if you have only one candidate, and that is the one, for you, that was a great candidate pool. And I only say that because I don't want people to get mixed up with numbers. The numbers aren't the thing. What the real thing is, what are they bringing to the table that you are looking for? With this timeline, the process is done by mid to late December, mid-December, really. Questions?
I have a question.
Or comments? Yes?
I feel like this is very well organized and very structured. And I am just curious, that seems like tomorrow. I feel like December seems so soon. So is it possible, and hopefully we find an amazing candidate in that time, and if we don't, we have, we push back the timeline, I'm assuming. I'm just curious, it just seems...
You go.
Not aggressive? I mean, I'm optimistic, but it seems like a very short timeline. Am I wrong?
Yes, not really. I've done it in a shorter timeline than this. This is, this is probably a, you know, average timeline. I wouldn't even say it's short at all.
Okay, thank you.
For one thing, you post the position, people who are interested are going to, and people who are in, who are thinking about moving, either moving from another district to this district, whether we're talking about out of state or in state, or people who are interested in moving up to the superintendent's name, they're gonna jump on that posting.
Yeah.
So you have all that information right then. You know, usually when I post, I think every time, I've always convinced people to do, "Applications open until fill, reference given to applications received by." And so then, you'll still get applications in. Honestly, hardly ever do you get new applicants. Hardly ever. Because it's just the timeframe, it's the time. But no, this isn't, it's not, it's not abbreviated at all.
Thank you. Karen?
I would just say that I think the importance and of the timeline is that there are going to be so many other superintendent openings.
Oh, I agree.
So that will be a problem if we are not aggressive.
In line with everybody else.
But this is a year where there are a lot of openings. This is a year where there are a lot of openings. And the first year that I started doing superintendent searches, we were kind of in that situation. And back then, honestly, there were three candidates that rose to the top on everyone's timeline, and people were jockeying for position. Boards were changing their board meeting dates in order to be able to get an interview before a particular candidate accepted another position.
Wow.
With this timeline, I don't believe that you'll be in that situation. But that does happen.
And that's four boards from when Bill gave us his...
It was 12, right? Now 16?
That's what I believe.
Yeah.
Is that 16 throughout the state?
Yeah.
That are open?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Everyone's looking.
Any other questions or comments? It's not your last opportunity. If you didn't think of anything for me right there tonight after a long board meeting. Kathy has my email address, so I'm happy to answer any questions, either through Kathy, or you can just send me a note.
I can, I'll send out her email address for everybody.
Elaine, thanks for your patience tonight. I enjoyed texting with you, keeping you abreast on when I was gonna sign on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, Elaine. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Look forward to meeting you in person.
Us too.
So I need a motion, move that the RPS Board enter into an executive session to consider a disciplinary or dismissal action against an employee pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A4, which permits the board to enter an executive session to consider a disciplinary or dismissal action against an employee, and that the Director of Support Services, Equity and Inclusion, Pam Reed, and the Board's Legal Counsel, Andrew Snow of Mewb Association PLC, also attend the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is moved and seconded that the board enter into an executive session to consider a disciplinary or dismissal action against an employee pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A4, which permits the board to enter into an executive session to consider a disciplinary or dismissal action against an employee, and that the Director of Support Services, Equity and Inclusion, Pam Reed, and the Board's Legal Counsel, Andrew Snow of Mewb Association PLC, also attend the executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?